January 3, 2024, Yum-Tilla County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everyone that this is a public meeting and is being recorded. We do have visitors online, and if you have a public comment on any issue not on the agenda, please come forward, make your comments at the start of the meeting when we make that announcement. Please hold your comments to three minutes and make sure that you give your name and address for the record. Any awards, recognitions, or correspondence?
I do have a couple. I'm going to start with, this is a letter to the aware committee and the commissioners. On behalf of the Yum-Tilla County Pioneer Association, I'd like to thank Yum-Tilla County Board of Commissioners and the aware committee for their approval recommendations for our recent aware grant. The funds were used to provide entertainment and signage for a celebration that has taken place annually for 130 years. Enclosed is a photo of one of the 13 banners purchased with the grant that will be displayed along Main Street in historic Weston to announce the upcoming Pioneer picnic. We appreciate the support and recognition of this proud tradition in Yum-Tilla County. Thank you, Jackie Gentry, Yum-Tilla County Pioneer Association president. And then on the back of this, you'll see the banner, and these will be hanging up on Main Street in Weston, so. That was very nice.
Very nice.
So I also have an employee in the quarter. Get all my goodies in a row here. So the Yum-Tilla County Employee Excellence Committee was created to acknowledge and commend the efforts of employees who served the citizens of the county efficiently and effectively with a focus on professional development and outstanding customer service. October, November, and December 2023 Employee of the Quarter Excellence Award to this employee, and in that spirit, the committee wishes to share with you the nomination letter from this person's peers that warranted this recognition, so congratulations. This person is an amazing county employee. He has always provided excellent customer service for the many visitors to the records division. He also provides excellent and timely assistance to other county offices by helping with research of county records. His vast knowledge and experience are a tremendous asset to the county, along with his kind and compassionate demeanor. So congratulations to Steve Churchill. So with that, we have some perks that go along with this, Steve.
Come on up.
Get it up here. Eight hours of PTO pay time off, use of the parking spot. That's probably going to make a difference to you. Ask them Yum-Tilla County swag, which is coming up right behind you. Oh, he said, see me later for some of that. So anyways, this is the congrat, the award certificate and the letter as well. Thank you. So congratulations, Steve.
I'll get a quick picture of you. Perfect.
I'm done, Mr. Chair.
I do. We have this whole stack.
And she's going to read each and every one of them.
They're from the kids at Pendleton Junior Show, and they are absolutely priceless.
Yes, they are.
We get pictures, we get thank yous, and so this means a lot. And actually, what they did was is they thanked us for bumping during the sale. So anyway, just fun to read, and yeah, I'm glad we do that kind of thing.
Some of the photos are just adorable.
They're wonderful. They're wonderful.
Some of the comments were.
Yes.
Not sure their moms proofread them. Any other awards, recognitions? Changes to the agenda? Approval of the minutes from meeting of November 21, 2023?
Mr. Chair, with approval?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any public input this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. First off is the board officers and the. I'll make the motion. How's that?
That'll work.
So just for everybody's background, each year, the chair passes and it's lined out in our commissioners manual and the charter on how this takes place. So for the next year, this BCC order will have Commissioner Schaefer as the chair and Commissioner Timmons as the vice chair. So at this time, I'd like to adopt order or move to adopt order BCC 2024-01.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I'm going to get rid of this and pass it over. And you can have that stack too.
Okay. Item number two, public health purchase.
All right. Hello, Commissioners. Alicia Lundgren, Deputy Director with Yum-Tilla County Public Health. I have an item before you today to purchase an ultrasound device for our public health clinics in Pendleton and Hermiston. This is a device that's been asked for by our current nurse practitioner, and in response to that, we sought a grant through the reproductive health program at Oregon Health Authority that will cover the cost of this purchase. And then we went out and found three different quotes for different devices that met the requirements of what we were looking for, for what was going to be ultrasounded, and we made sure it would connect to the appropriate technology that was needed. And this, of the three quotes that we found, the one that we're requesting to move forward with is the one from Claris for $13,644, and all of that will be covered by the grant that we got from OHA with, because that was awarded at $31,000.
Any questions?
My, I guess my only question is, when you talk about reproductive being used for reproductive health, can you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, there's two main purposes that it will be used for, to help with patient safety and assisting the provider with inserting and removing long-acting reversible contraceptive devices, as well as pregnancy verification and gestational age determination.
It doesn't assist in aborting the fetus or any of that?
No, we don't provide that service, just referrals. Yep.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Do you have another discussion? All fair or the motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item three, dispatch contract. That's Captain Primmer here.
Thanks, Alicia.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to seek approval for a continuing dispatch quality assurance training and then also continuing our SOP development from motivations due to an oversight on their part. They did not bill us in July, so we are already six months into it and a little over, but they were fine with that. They have had some issues with getting enough people to do the quality assurance. It seems to be leveled off, and the same with working on the SOPs and that kind of thing. So I'm seeking approval for, from July through June of 2024, for the amount of $16,519.78, which would cover those three components. As I stated in the, excuse me, the pinky, we are hoping to be able to start doing the quality assurance. I'm going to go out on a limb. We are fully staffed. I'm pretty excited about that. And so the sergeants will be coming off of the dispatch desk after the first quarter, so, and actually being able to supervise, which will coincide with getting our SOPs in line, continuing that process, and managing the staff.
Wow, that's huge.
It's huge. I've got five going to the academy this month.
Wow.
Yeah. I'm super excited.
Yeah, as you should be.
Yeah.
Fantastic news.
So is the price captain, is it? We're not, they didn't give us any kind of discount?
They actually did, because they were not able to fulfill the contract, so it would have been more. And in the proposal, they say how many, they've subtracted for the quality assurance and then the SOPs, as well as the training. It took a little bit longer to get the quote finalized, because we had a on-call staff leave, and so they were, I told them we weren't going to pay for that person. So it took a little bit to get that fixed, but, so they've given us that.
Just ballpark, what would it, because going into the next year, hopefully it's a full price. I mean, I would like to pay full price if you're getting full service. Do you know what the full price would have been?
I think it's probably going to be closer to 20.
Okay.
Yeah, and that includes the 10,000-ish. I think that's where it's going to be the biggest expense, because right now, they have how many employees we have. So unless I hire two more on call, which I have in the works too, so, you know. So that's where the biggest expense is going to be. And then the hope is, once we get the SOPs online and continue that process, we'll be able to eliminate that fee.
Okay.
And even if they, we ask them to do some revamping on the SOPs, I think it's like 340 a month, so it'd be like a one-time cost.
So when you say online, is that through the app?
It is not through the app. It actually, we, I guess it is kind of a portal that we're using. We sent them our old ones. They're going through and looking at the new laws and best practices from NINA, National, and making sure that they fit within those parameters. Then they send it back to us and let us know, and then we tweak them if we need to, and then we finalize them, and they'll be all in an online SOP manual. And we've also, they're also working with us. It's not in there, but it's part of the SOPs, a training manual as well, so.
Excellent.
You mentioned that the sergeants were coming off the desk. What about the captain?
Yes. Here and there, just a couple hours and stuff until we get them back from the academy and stuff, but yes, I've not been sitting nearly as many hours, which is grateful. So there's a lot more going on than, and eventually, I'm going to really retire, so. That's what they keep saying. I don't believe it, and I'm like, no, I'm serious, so we'll see.
Questions from Commissioner Timmons?
I'd move for approval of another year of the quality assurance SOP development dispatch training for motivations for $16,519.78.
Got a motion and a second? All further motions say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah. GIS software purchase.
Good morning, Commissioners. We can see Valley, GIS Cartographer Assessment Taxation Division. As our GIS department has grown, we've become aware of the need for an Esri Enterprise Geo Database. Currently, myself and our other two cartographers cannot work in the same parcel fabric project at the same time. Having an enterprise software will allow us to be able to work in the same projects at the same time and increase our efficiency. We work with several other entities as well, which will increase the efficiencies there. We currently work with the Yum-Tilla County Health Department and all of the fire districts in Yum-Tilla County. This will also expand our dashboard abilities moving forward. The GIS department has been awarded $23,563.78 for the Enterprise Geo Database license and enterprise server via Grand Home Ormap. There is a yearly maintenance cost of $5,500 after the initial cost. Our requested action is the authorization of the purchase of the Esri Enterprise Software License for $22,000, an enterprise compatible server in the amount of $1,563.80.
Any questions?
One comment I have is, I thought we already did this, so I. I, yeah, you talk about needing tools to do your job. This is definitely a tool to do your job.
Yeah, we are really excited.
The piece, the part that gets me is that only one person at a time can be in the program.
Yeah, yeah, and my best analogy that I've thought about is it's like having a Microsoft Word document that five people are trying to edit and having to email it back and forth with each other compared to being able to have a Google Doc. So it'll definitely increase our efficiencies and a lot of aspects that I think we're not even aware of yet until we get it.
I'll compare it to Google Docs.
I'm okay with the comparison.
I would move for approval of the purchase of the Esri Enterprise Software License for $22,000 and the compatible enterprise for $1,563.80.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All further motions say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, Commissioner Doran's making up for lost time and making motions.
Hey, it's my department.
There you go. Canal Road. Mr. Phillips.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Fellows, Public Works Director. I think this is the first time in a long time I've been up here and haven't been asking for money, so.
Forever.
So today, what Public Works is requesting is the board to take action and to allow the Public Works Department to legalize a portion of Canal Road. This was something that we recognized through some development going on down in Stanfield that a piece, portion of canal laying between 395 and just a little north of Feedville really doesn't match the alignment that is listed on part of the old county road system, and then there's a portion in there where we can't find any of the records at all. They've either been lost or something has happened to them. So this is kind of the first step for the board to approve the process that we go through through this legalization process. This action actually fits the, it would benefit citizens of the county a great deal in, especially in the expansion of that Stanfield-Hermiston area as it grows, so.
Any questions?
No, I think this is interesting. My grandparents had a home on Canal Road many years ago, and I went there for, since I was growing up, but not in the area you're talking about, the other legalized side. So when they started talking about Canal Road, I forget that it goes all the way through, and so it's longer than what you think.
It is. And I think actually, the prior motion from GIS, I think, within the next few years, being able to have center lines will, or good center line GIS, I think we're going to find other pieces similar to this, as much as I hate to say it.
This is not anything new. We find pieces, sections of road in Yum-Tilla County, and all counties find this from time to time, that don't align with what's been recognized or what's listed. And so it's an ongoing process. It's something that'll never stop. I mean, we will be doing these for a long time.
Yeah, I agree 100%. Thanks, Tom, for bringing that up.
Okay, I move to adopt order number RD 2024-01.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All further motions say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
It's like it's going to the Sage Delong show here for a minute.
Let's see if he does better than Delong.
Ambulance franchises, step right up. Is that you, or is that? Keep looking at each other.
I was wondering. Sage Delong, Yum-Tilla County Emergency Manager. Before you, I bring the ambulance franchise renewals. The ambulance franchises for the ambulance service areas are expiring. All the current franchisees have submitted applications for renewal, and they have been vetted. The recommendation is to extend the franchises as provided by the ambulance service ordinance to June 30, 2028.
Thanks, Sage. How many total franchises are there?
Four.
Six.
Six.
One, two, three.
Correct.
Oh, that's right. And does this include CDA?
Yes.
All right.
Any other questions?
Nope, that was my question, how many were there?
Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to adopt order number BCC 2024-006.
Got a motion and a second? All further motions say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Stick around. Emergency management grant agreement.
All right, Commissioners, before you is the EMPG grant. This covers 50, is a 50% match that covers salary and benefits from OEM. There's obviously a lot of things that go along with this, as in trainings and different stuff to hit this match, but we, the emergency manager, me, is asking for the approval of this emergency management performance grant for Yum-Tilla County for a total of $74,152, and we'll, that will go retroactive, so we'll be able to start getting reimbursed from June up until this time, once this grant's approved.
You know, I know it was a struggle with EMPG this year, to say the least, and Robert will tell you, it's never smooth with EM, but this year has really kind of been something else. First of all, thanks for sticking with it and working through it. Have they given you any kind of idea where it's going to land? I know that they finally just said, we're going to do this year, and then we're going to modify the formula and everything next year. Is that still, or are they just, they really don't know where they're going to end up?
So there is a lot of modifications that are going along with EMPG. They're trying to figure out, the way that the EMPG works is obviously comes from the federal and goes to the state, and they take a cut off the top of it, and then it goes down. So from this year, previous to last year, it's actually decreased. Counties are getting less for their emergency management programs, and so the new director and others are looking at trying to change that, so more money's coming back to the counties. Others are opting out of the program entirely, because they're actually putting on more requirements to actually get the grant, reporting requirements, but we'll work through those. They're still working on a ton of stuff. Some counties haven't even received their EMPG document yet. I received probably 10 to 12 different drafts of going through it before I finally brought it to you guys, so I've been working through this process for a good part of three months, trying to get that done. There's a lot of nuances with it, but hopefully, they can figure it out, so we can start getting reimbursements before February from June. And so a lot of counties are struggling with this. A lot of smaller counties that can't float the money are opting out, so it's becoming an issue, and a lot of emergency managers spend a lot of time discussing. If you look into the documents, I am just getting reimbursed for personnel services. If you try to do food, vehicle, anything on those lines, it becomes a very stringent process, where they might reimburse you for a lunch to drive there, but since you're driving back, they won't reimburse you if it's after the meeting time. There's, and if you ask finance, like, you're like, you know, they'll get an argument with you about a cent within your budget. So it is a stringent process, but hopefully, they can clean it up, and I think the new director and state residency officer are cleaning it up. It's just, it's difficult to go through.
No, I guess my angst in the whole thing is EMPG really is kind of the foundation of a lot of things, and when you start crumbling that foundation, that other stuff on the peripheral just becomes that much harder for you on top of daily stuff. And I just, I commend you for staying on top of this, because it's a challenge.
Yeah, well, that's what emergency managers do, and the fiscal department's been really helpful, and everybody helping me out with those things. So I think we got a good move forward, and once we get this approved, you'll, we'll start getting payments in and get that balanced before the end of the year.
My question would be, why are they making it so tough?
That is a question that even.
So they can pay out.
Exactly, that's probably the underlying.
And they're taking, they're taking a bigger cut, too.
Yeah, there's, they're making it hard. I don't know. I don't know if it's person, there's a lot of personnel movement, because they became a department, but I think FEMA came in and the feds and wanted more stringent processes, because there's been some talks that they don't know where some of the money's going, even the directors coming in are asking about where the slough's coming off and where is it going, and they don't know. So I think there's a lot of moving parts that are happening in that department that are going to get fixed, because it is difficult. There's certain people that can't even get reimbursed for driving to a meeting, because there's disagreements about that. So hopefully, it'll be fixed, and next year, come this time, it'll be a clearer process, but if it's not, we'll still get the money, we'll get it done, and that's what we'll do, so.
I love your attitude.
Appreciate your work on that.
Yeah, no kidding.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll move for approval of grant number 23-500, EMPG grant.
Got a motion and a second? All further motions say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Solid Waste Committee appointment. Oh, yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Walder, Community Development Director. This item before you is for a new appointment to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Our bylaws require that we have a member of the Planning Commission be on the committee, and that position had been held by Don Wysocki, who is termed out of the Planning Commission, and so a new member, Sam Tucker, was interested and agreed to participate in the, on the SWAC committee, so we'd like your approval for that to move forward.
Do you have any questions?
Me neither.
I move to adopt order number BCC 2024-005.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All further motions say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And still you, Economic Development Purchase.
Yeah, so every two years, Business Oregon works with Conway Data to put together a Oregon-focused edition of the Site Selection Magazine. This is a national publication. I shared a copy of it with you guys from the 2022 example, and our thoughts was that it was a very professional, well-done publication. And so we're looking to, we've been approached by Conway Data and given the opportunity to place an advertisement in this next issue, and over, I think, 12,500 copies of this magazine will be published, hard copy, and then 10,000 of those will be direct mail to various businesses and site selectors, and then another 2,500 copies will be available, used at trade shows that Business Oregon attends. I'm sure we could get some copies of it as well. And then, so there are several different options and ways to advertise. Our recommendation is that we purchase the investment profile. The fee for that is $14,000. As you know, in the past, we haven't done a lot of outreach or marketing for economic development in the county, and so we are thinking about pausing some of our other advertisement that we've been doing through, for example, through the other Oregon magazine, and putting those resources towards this. So asking to use the economic development funding to pay for the costs of this and give it a try. I did check with a couple folks who had advertised in the magazine in the past. I spoke with Steve Crisman, the city of Pendleton. He indicated that they weren't going, they weren't planning to advertise in this round. They're trying to stretch their dollars and try a few different things with those, but he did indicate he'd be willing to share any stock photography or anything we need for that. But he did indicate he'd be willing to share any stock photography or anything we need for that. And then we also checked with Lane County to see, because we saw that they had advertised in the 2022 issue. They couldn't point specifically to, you know, any developments coming to Lane County as a result of the magazine. But they did see it, a lot of advantages to advertising in it because it had outreach to site selectors that they normally wouldn't have access to. So I think they were planning on advertising again, so.
Expand on that a little bit, when you say that gives them more access to site selectors.
Yeah, so with, with this magazine, it does have a large outreach. As I said, there'll be over twelve thousand five hundred copies printed. They also have a digital footprint, so you can go online. Anyone can go online and view this magazine. But in, in your packet, it, it speaks to a lot of the different impacts that you'll see out of advertising through this.
The, one thing I wanted to, a couple of things. One is, nothing excites me more than just having a strategic approach to economic development. I think that's really fast forward, so thank you for that. Number two is, brought this up at the West End Community Development Group. And I think that, I heard that Commissioner Timmons had already talked to some of these. But I think, one, one of the things I heard is that if we need stock photos, those type of things, that the cities are more than likely. But to reinforce the, kind of how these magazines and these kind of outreaches work, one of the managers asked Byron, you know, do they use somebody? Because they have quite a bit of new retail franchise going in. And they, I, I didn't know this, but they, they actually use a contract with a retail outlet site selector. And somebody asked him, was it successful? And they, like, he pointed out is that it was directly brought in with James Footwear and Marshalls and Popeyes. And they said that was the first year that they contracted. So I think these type of outreaches do work. I think that the important part is, is that as a county, we, we all understand that that's just the first step. Anyway, I'm excited.
I'll just add one other advantage of this will be, they will provide us with someone to help us come up with the content. So that's not an area that's in my wheelhouse. And so having that assistance, so I'll be really beneficial to come up with a real, a, a good message that we can share about Umatilla County.
Says that's not his wheelhouse, that he bobs out with stuff that is amazing.
I know, yeah. I think his wheelhouse is bigger than he thinks it is. Any other questions?
I would move for approval of the fourteen thousand dollars for the investment profile in the site selection, the Business Oregon Site Selection Magazine.
Got a motion in a second. I'll fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, next item is maintenance repair payment.
Good morning, commissioners. Mark Tanner, Facilities Manager, Umatilla County. Before you is the emergency repairs that you authorized for the elevator at Stafford Hansel. They were able to get in there on Friday and get that operational. So our downtime was pretty minimal.
Quick, I just want to make sure you're aware of what you're talking about. You probably are. Are you aware of this one?
No, I'm not.
Do you kind of go back?
So security called me and let me know the elevator, the main elevator at Stafford Hansel was not functioning. So we brought elevator repair guys in. There ended up being multiple problems. One, the battery backup had died, which causes the elevator to stop working. Got, got that bypassed until he could get anyone in. Then determined there was a high voltage relay that had gone bad. He's guessing from possibly a power surge, since the battery backup was not there to protect it. So we got that fixed. And then turns out that the LED strips on the sides of the door to keep it from closing on someone had also failed. So those, fortunately, they happen to have in stock in their warehouse. So that's why we were able to get them back in. That was on Wednesday. They were back in on Friday to do the repairs and get it back up and running. And the first day that I was, when I was there with the elevator tech, I ended up having to help a mother get a baby in stroller up the stairs and then also elderly person that was having a hard time walking up the stairs. So fortunately, I was there, but it's, it's kind of just shows how important the elevator is.
So I did sign that, the emergency authorization, to get that out and run. Until today.
So it's for seventy-eight hundred.
I'd move for approval of seventy-eight hundred dollars for the elevator repair at Stafford Hansel.
Second.
Got a motion, second. I'll fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Perfect. Thank you, commissioners.
Law enforcement commute authorization.
The next two items are related. Annually, the board approves what employees of the county are able to commute in county-owned vehicles. The first one up is for law enforcement. The difference between these two is that law enforcement does not have a tax implication to it, to the employees. The other one does, for non-law enforcement. In this instance, request the sheriff, if he had any additional positions he wanted to add in, and he did. One was a captain for the criminal division and one was a civil deputy. And so those were added to the list, and that is what is before you now for review.
I, you guys don't mind.
Go ahead.
No.
It's been brought to my attention that per federal IRS, to, for this, for us to approve this, the civil deputies for all cars need to be marked.
That is correct. Or they can be unmarked, but if it has to be a law enforcement vehicle.
A law enforcement, okay. So in our case, the civil deputies, for this to be approved, need to be marked.
Marked or considered a law enforcement vehicle, yes.
Otherwise, they could still drive them home, but there'd be tax implication.
That is correct. They would be on the other list.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm going to, unless there's other questions.
No, I just had one question. This, this kind of tucks in, kind of previous to what you're saying, Dan. My question would be, how do they determine who gets a car? That would be my only question, is how do they make that determination? So, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess in response to that, it's the sheriff that makes that determination for this list.
It would be interesting to know how it makes that determination, so.
And, and I can see it being a benefit on the, even on the civil guys. But we need to make sure that we're following federal, federal law. I don't want to get in trouble. And maybe we haven't in the past, but now that it's been brought to our attention. I, I would move to adopt order number BCC two zero two four dash zero two with the amendment that the two civil deputies would be included in the other list until or, until the, unless they become marked cars. And at that time, they can return for a request from us.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second on the motion or the request? Any, all fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Who have a discussion first?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead.
Dan, you've, you've picked out the two civil deputies. What about the others that are listed on this list? Is there any question there?
All the others are marked.
They are all marked? Is that correct?
Yeah. Now, the sheriff has a brand-new one. I don't know if he's got his marked yet.
Sheriff, under sheriff and the captains, will probably be unmarked, but they're police vehicles. So I think they, I think they're fine.
Yeah.
Jail administrator, administrative sergeant.
I don't think they take theirs home, do they?
One does.
They're on the list.
They've been on the list, but those are marked vehicles. Those are...
They are.
Are they?
Okay, they're the recycled ones.
Okay.
As far as I know. I just noticed two civil ones.
Second, and...
Okay, so we've got a motion in a second. So any further discussion? All fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now the employee commute authorization for non-law enforcement.
So this would be the remainder of the employees that are authorized to commute in county vehicles. The difference is that is a taxable benefit to these employees. And again, this list has not been changed, but as proposed, but it will now be had the two other positions to it.
That would be...
I was just gonna make sure that was part of the motion, so, okay.
So I would make motion to adopt order number BCCC two zero two four dash zero three with the addition of the two civil deputy vehicles.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, finance position. Not yet, Dan. I don't know.
Good morning, commissioners. Robert Paul, CFO. This morning, I'm asking that you approve the creation of a position for the finance department. We recently discussed it in a, in a budget discussion. I believe it's imperative that we have someone trained up to help us move along with our new system. Although it creates, I think, some efficiencies, it also creates more responsibilities for our office. And I believe it would be essential to start that as soon as possible.
Okay, any questions?
I do have one question. Are you gonna have a hard time finding someone?
I really don't know. I've had mixed results when I've looked for personnel in the past. I believe that just the nature of any in Eastern Oregon, there are not a lot of similar positions, so there's probably not a lot of trained people to do that. I'm hoping we can attract someone, but we'll have to see.
Are you willing to help train?
Me? I'm, I'm willing, and I don't believe that's a choice.
Well, I just wondered if maybe, I mean, you probably Royal Score if you found somebody that was just up and ready to go.
Right. I, I anticipate that whomever we would get would have a background in accounting, but certainly won't have the institutional knowledge nor the software knowledge that, that they're going to need to be helpful right away. Yeah, I think it'll require considerable training.
Just to, and the overabundance of optimism, confidence, I have friends that on three different accounting firms, and every one of them are scrambling for accounts right now.
I, I need positive influence, positive vibes.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve creation of position of accountant, range twenty-five, in finance, effective immediately.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Dan. BOPTA appointment.
Once again, once again, Mike.
Morning, commissioners. Dan Laney with Director of Administrative Services. And before you, we have an appointment to the BOPTA board. As you're well aware, that we've lost two of our board members for BOPTA that were earlier approved due to circumstances. And I appreciate Commissioner Timmons volunteering to help us out. We need to at least have a quorum, which we do now by having two after this appointment. We're still looking for a third, but we can progress now with our requirement to do the BOPTA board. So before you is an appointment to have Cindy Timmons replace William J. Elfrin.
I would move to adopt order number BCC two zero two four dash zero zero four and say thank you very much, Commissioner Timmons.
Second. Oh, was that too fast?
Can we have an applause here?
So there's been a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
You are a hero in our eyes.
Everybody.
That is no joke. Thanks, Dan. Okay, Corps easement.
Hey, this is a request to pay some more money regarding the central pipeline project. It, it relates to the easement. This is what is needed from the Corps, Army Corps of Engineers, to access the river. The existing pump station is located on the Corps property. And we need, the county needs to obtain the easement from the Corps to proceed. This was started back in February twenty-twenty-two. They thought it was on course, found out it wasn't quite approved yet. And so the Corps is in working on it, and as a result, they need, they incurred additional costs. And so that's what is for the board right now, is to pay an additional administrative fee for the easement for thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And also, part of this will include additional surveys needed for the easement and the Corps' requirements. So that is part of the motion as well. And it also looks like we need outside legal assistance to help get this matter through the Corps. We have a potential attorney, but we still don't have that identified yet. So the request is just to approve additional costs for the legal services survey as well as the administrative fee.
Is this one motion or two motions?
You can go ahead and make it all, just what is written there would be fine.
All right, I will, I will make that motion.
Well, I have a question. So the thirty-two thousand five hundred, is that to this point or are they done?
We thought they were done last time.
Or two times ago.
At this point, they, they think they're done, but...
But who knows? So with that, I would make the motion to authorize payment of administrative fee of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars to US Army Corps of Engineers and costs for legal services and surveys.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's, that's a long way to put that. Are you in favor of it?
I know. Hospital facility, adminis, whoops, authority appointment.
At the present time, the hospital authority board is requesting to reappoint Joe Fayumara to its board. He is eligible. He's only served one term. They also have an additional vacancy, but they do not have an identified person yet. And they are requesting for board input on that. But right now, it's just, before the board is just for the reappointment.
I do have two people I've talked to, so we should have a recommendation.
Okay.
Since it's such a tough, tough, tough job.
Yeah.
I, I would move for adoption of order BCC two zero two four dash zero zero seven.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, with that, Commissioner Timmons, any final thoughts?
I do not.
Commissioner Doran.
I just want to say thank you through the past year and this year. I think that as a team, we accomplished actually a lot. Policy, financially, fiscally, and on-the-ground advancements in a lot of different areas and a lot of different subjects. I think we have a lot of challenges ahead of us. I think we have a lot of challenges ahead of us, and it's been, been a great year. I, I think we've had some great, robust discussions, debates, and outcomes. So thank you, Commissioner Timmons, Commissioner Schaefer, thank you.
All right, thank you, and I agree, we did get a lot of things done, and I think it streamlined the process quite a bit, so. All right, with that, we are adjourned, thank you.